I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Champlain Valley School District Board for our December 5 budget meeting. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda?
Do you want to ask guests going?
Are there new budget buddies?
Sure, if you can do that. Yeah, so why don't we, we'll go around, we'll start from Kevin on that end and go all the way around.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Mara, a school board member from Williston.
Jeff Evans, Director of Learning Innovation.
Megan Roy, Director of Student Support Services.
Mark McDermott, Director of Human Resources Policy and Legal Services.
Colleen McKinnon, Board Member, and I live in Heinsburg.
Brendan McMahon, Board Member, I live in Williston.
Amanda Marvin, Board Member, I also live in Williston.
Eric Gill, Board Member, Charlotte.
Russ Caffrey, Board Member from Shelburne.
Erin Brady, Board Member from Williston.
Dave Connery, I'm a Board Member from Shelburne.
Elaine Pinkney, Superintendent.
Jean Jensen, Chief Operations Officer.
Lynn Johnich, Board Member from Charlotte.
Ray Maynor, Board Member from Heinsburg.
I'm only down in Pennsylvania, I'm Budget Buddy from Williston.
Kate Cross, Budget Buddy from Shelburne.
Jeff Morton, Budget Buddy from Charlotte.
Robert Martin, Budget Buddy from Shelburne.
Thanks, thanks so much for coming, thanks for being part of the process, and thanks for coming a little early to get the primer from Jean, thanks for doing that, Jean, I appreciate it. Next up is Audience and Communications, is there anyone here to speak to the Board separate from anything on the agenda?
No.
Okay, okay, and with that, we will move into
It's for the audience. They all have one thing.
Discussion matters, which is to begin our budget work session, we'll start with Elaine.
Thank you, I just distributed the PowerPoint slides, and I hope they're enough for the audience, but I also, for all of the Board members, I also just barely sent you a link, so if you want to look at, if you have your laptop and you want to look at it on the air, it's fine. So, transition year two of the Champlain Valley School District, and you might remember right in this room last year when we were looking at our first kind of foray into realizing really what were two important goals of the Study Committee, ensuring that if we were to merge, that we would have substantial equity amongst the schools at the student level, that what we were providing for students programmatically and in terms of opportunities would be substantially equal, and that that was matched with local autonomy. So, nobody really wanted to hear about cookie cutter school, because it's really easy to have it equal or equitable if at the top you just say, okay, well you just get so many of these, so many of these, so many of these, and you don't have any discussions about, well, what really is your need, and how does that play into it. So, we're year two, last year there were times when in this discussion there were questions, and my response was, well, that's a project that we'll have to do next year. So today's, tonight's presentation delves into a couple of those, three of those projects, one of them pretty substantial. There are a lot of slides, but I want you to know that some of them, I'm just going to say, this is just a refresher for you of work that we've already done. But that's what, this slide is really important. These are the Board's goals, this is what the Board says to us, and then I share with the administrative team around, what is it that we're doing anyways when we're building a budget? It's not just about making sure that, thank you very much Jean, the numbers come out and they bounce out, and the bottom right-hand number looks the same as the other ones that are adding up to it. The Board's goals and key initiatives, we're going to go over in a minute, I'm going to go over process and timeline, one of the Board's goals was make sure that the principals are involved in this. So again, real easy, if we're back at the central office and we're just doing this, much more complicated when you're talking about six buildings, five different systems, and making sure that it all works, and everybody's involved in a meaningful way. And then we'll talk about the alignment of the proposed budget with the education quality standards, which are, like, that's the vision, mission that the state has for us, and the equity and autonomy goals, the projects. So the Board goals, implement our CVSD mission. So we're really proud of that, if you ever attended a budget meeting pre the merger, no matter whether you were in Heinsburg, Shelburne, Charlotte, Williston, CVU, or CSSU back in the day, everything started with sharing that mission, vision, because people really take pride in it, it was developed with community input, with broad-based teacher input, with broad-based Board input, Lynn Johnich was one of the key people on that committee, and so the Board reviews that, and everything that we do, we tie back to that, and we're still being true to what we hold dear and dear. Realize the equity and autonomy piece that I spoke about before, implement the key initiatives. And the key initiatives come about as a result of the work, the important work that we're doing, and the important work that develops out of the Board retreat, the Board has a retreat every year in the spring, and my own evaluation process, which is, it's very comprehensive, and gets to like, what's the work that we're doing, and what's the work that we'd like you to be doing, and when it's all going well, those two things intersect. So those key initiatives, I'll just speak briefly about those, and then of course, meet or exceed the education quality standards. So this is one of the, like, we're just going to look at this briefly. In a ceremony previous to this night, they'd say in the Oscars, there was a meeting where the Board kind of looked at the first pass budget, what it would look like. This is highlighted, this piece right here is highlighted because that's the piece that we're going to be talking about. We've already had the special ed presentation, we've already had the Board's decision around, we want you to come in at 2.3% budget to budget, show us what that looks like, and then we'll let you know if that looks like, you know, we believe that will support our kids in the way that we want them to be supported. This is from the retreat last May, when we were looking at what are the roles and responsibilities of each of these groups in this new merged system. So, the administrator role, this is why I'm up here, that instructional program is my responsibility. And then for the Board to triannually, meaning every three years, I guess, discuss and set policy on class size, because you're going to see a whole lot of work that we did on class size this year, and that is based on the education quality standards and the Board's policy. So the Board needs to review that every three years, to say, does this still make sense for us, given, you know, what we know about how our schools are doing? And then annually report to the Board on progress to the Board, on progress to those goals. And then the work around the equity matrix, and for the School Board's role to annually review the implications.
This is just the supports, was, I don't know if it's classroom, this is supports to the classroom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so, general ed classroom and general ed supports to the classroom, and you're going to hear more about that later too, thank you. Okay, so this is the process cycle, so this is, how do we meaningfully engage others in the work? Erin?
Erin, do you want to sit up here?
So this is a cycle, an iterative cycle that leads with, lead is the central office and local administrative group that meets once a month, has a retreat in the summer, develops its own goals and work plan, and then meets for a full day at CVU once a month to do their work. When we were in the budget process, some of the work that we're doing is for the whole group to discuss, so that's, at that lead meeting, we would have time for everybody to discuss a particular component of the budget, maybe the 2.3%, maybe Jean comes and says, here's how we're organizing the different elements of the budget, that kind of thing, but that's, that's an opportunity for discussion and input on all of the main components. We also have co-meetings, once a week, where we hopefully process what we've learned from Board meetings, from these lead meetings, from the next thing I'm going to get to around Robbins, to kind of digest it and say, okay, what did we learn, are there things we need to change, how do we reflect this kind of work? And then the last thing is principal meetings, so once a month, Megan Roy, Director of Student Services, Jeff Evans, Director of Learning and Innovation, and myself, meet individually with principal groups. So we get to talk about the same things in a very different way. Now we're really focused on, if it's Greg, or it's Jen and Stephanie, or if it's Jeff and Susan in Heinsburg, we get to talk about your school, what does it look like in your school? If we were to do this, what would be the impact here? What suggestions do you have? People have heard me say often, at the end of those days, I feel so much smarter, there's not a day that we have these meetings that by the end of the day we feel so smart about whatever it is that we're discussing. And this is iterative, so it's not like we went once around the horn, we probably went three times around the horn. And last week when we were meeting with teams about like a particular part of the equity matrix that we were working on, at the end we scheduled a couple other meetings, because we realized we needed time to sit back and like, absorb what we had learned, and then in a couple instances, get back to people and say, okay, you've had time to sit on this, do you think this still works? So that's how we address, we believe, meaningful involvement from the administrators at the local level. This is how we believe we address, implement the mission vision. So we have all of these things that we're really keenly focused on, standards both at the local level, at the state level, and national level, professional development, and I think we've made huge strides in that area, this is the second year of our early release late start, and honestly, in the past, I think we always had great professional development, but really when you have professional development someday in August, and then you wait around three months, and then you have another day sometime in October, and you wait around another three months, it's not necessarily seamless, the transition from that one day to three months later. Now we have it every week, and it is very focused, and I know I've seen the difference, not in the work, because I'm not there doing the work, these people are doing the work, but I've noticed the difference in how the work plan looks, and the things that they've adjusted between last year and this year, and that the same things are continuous. So I think we're making great strides in ensuring that that part of our work is really done in a really good way, it's embedded, and it's continuous, and it's going to be focused on those key initiatives that we're working on. Instructional practice, you know, I don't have to read this to you, we're really always looking at, what's the new research saying, what do we now know about how kids learn, how can we make sure that we're always doing the best that we can in our assessments, and then reporting progress. So then the education quality standards, that's a hot link for those of you who have this, all the Board members who have this, those of you who don't, if you just Google "education quality standards Vermont," it will bring you right to this document. So, is that interesting, are yours highlighted?
Uh huh, yeah. It took time to see it.
Yes, just to see it. So, you know what, really the purpose of the education quality standards, just like our Boards when they were in the Study Committee said, you know what, educational equity is really important. So, they're saying the same thing, it's really important that in Vermont's public schools, all of the students are afforded substantial, equal opportunities, quality opportunities, that School Boards have to make sure that they use the updated standards that are developed by the state, and that each public school will annually report, so we do that every year. Every year in January, you get a little postcard in the mail that says, would you like our nice thick handbook? I encourage you to get that, you know, to, you can go online, actually, that's what I really encourage you to do, is go online and look at it, but if you're a person who likes to have the paper, we do make copies and we'll get them to you. So that's a substantial report about like, how are we doing in all of these different areas? The highlighted areas there, personalization for each student, and we're doing a lot of work on that, I think that in the Champlain Valley School District, we're ahead of the game on that. People call us and ask our kids to come and talk to even the people at the Agency of Education about, how are you doing this work? Research-based practice, and flexible pathways. So instead of, you know, back in the day when it was Carnegie units, and if kids sat in a seat and did their work, at the end of the year they got a credit, and now it's much more about, what is it, we want them to learn at the end of this class, and our, how, what are all the ways that they can learn this? They don't all have to be in the seat in the classroom, and so that leads to, you don't learn everything in the seat in the classroom, you don't have to demonstrate everything you know in a single exam, so that's what this flexible pathways is about, and the demonstrating proficiency, so we have to be working on that. As part of the education quality standards, these two relate to the career and technical education, that we afford, we afford that opportunity for our kids. So in terms of the Champlain Valley School District, that is the Essex Tech Center and the Burlington Tech Center, and our kids have free access to that. And personalized learning plans, and that's another area that I think that we are ahead of the game. Curriculum has to be aligned with the standards that are approved by the State Board of Education, they have to be rigorous, right? So sometimes people say, well, could it possibly be as rigorous if we're, you know, if it's not all exactly the same? They have to be, that's the work we're charged with making sure that they are rigorous for every student, that they're relevant, we all know, like, the research is so clear, when kids are learning about things that they need to know in the work that they're doing right then, they are going to be more motivated, and they're going to learn more. And comprehensive, in all of these areas, so you can see they've, we haven't gotten away from listing, here are the areas in which we need to make sure our kids are proficient. So this is about class size. So when taken together, in K through three, the average class size has to be less than 20. So that means, that doesn't mean that every class has to be less than 20, it means that when you average it out, to meet EQS, now it's not necessarily your standard, but to meet EQS, if it's less than 20, you meet that standard, in grades K through three, and in grades four through 12, less than 25. You're going to see later, when I show you, this is one of the projects we really delved into, we meet that standard, we're going to have some discussion about what that looks like to meet that standard, but we meet that standard. The next one, total class role of a teacher shall not exceed 100 students, except in areas like phys ed, art, music, where you could imagine a band with more than, you know, 100 possibly, phys ed, depending on the structure. We don't 100% meet that standard at the high school. So, you know, I'm not hearing any pushback from the high school, let's just say that. When I say like, does this work, there, Adam can put, pull, point to one or two areas that he says, I need to fix this, but not everything, so, you know, you'll see that later too, I'm going to share a bunch of slides on that. And then schools with 10 or more full-time equivalent teachers have a full-time licensed principal. Library media, schools with over 300 students have to have a full-time library media person. And school counseling, no more than 300 students per school counselor, you might remember last year, that was red in one of our schools, and we're proposing to fix that. Now, whether that gets fixed in one year or two years, that's the work that we're still doing, because remember that chart that showed that iterative process, it's still going, we're still doing that work. I was still emailing somebody yesterday about like, well, could we do that this year, do you think? What would it look like if we did that right now? So that's still ongoing, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. At the secondary level, that's 200 per student, and school nursing, no more than 500 students per school nurse. And so then here's my little chart, green means we meet it, we meet or exceed, and if it's white, it means it does not apply. So you can see, we're doing pretty well with all of these things, instructional practices, all of that, we, given the education quality standards, we meet all of those, and we feel that we're doing good work in that.
Elaine, where it's no green, it just means it's not applicable?
It's not applicable, right. So graduation requirements really are a high school piece. Flexible pathways, okay, so we would put that, that's a good example of, EQS doesn't say that we have to have flexible pathways everywhere, but we think we do, so I could fill it in and just say, never mind that they didn't say we have to do it, we are doing that, we believe that that's something that makes a difference for all kids, but obviously, it plays itself out a little bit different, doesn't it, if you're talking about K4, middle school, or high school? And so, again, school leadership, we believe we meet all of that, and I outlined what are the things that they're expecting from school leadership, one of the promises of the merger was to free up the principals from facilities, budgets, that kind of thing, to spend more time as instructional leaders, and that is, that's the vision of the education quality standards too. Our site leaders, our building administrators ought to be spending their time as instructional leaders, not as, you know, building managers. And so I think that that has done that, the principals are spending, have spent much, much less time on budgets now than they did two years ago. Hopefully much, much less time on facilities, getting there, right?
All the fun stuff.
All the fun stuff, yes, for Jean, we're letting Jean have all the fun stuff. Needs-based professional learning, I think that our, again, I'm going to say that the early release late start really addresses that. And mentoring for new principals, all our new principals get mentoring, we, you know, if a new principal says to me in year two, I could really use a mentor again, I don't question that for a second, that's really a worthwhile experience for principals. Staff evaluation, so that's all green, but I can tell you that in that group that I spoke about earlier, the lead group, which is the principals and the central office leadership team, every year when we're developing our work plan, we choose three or four areas that we're going to divide our group up into design teams. And supervision and evaluation, with I think Mark at the lead, or certainly as a support to the group, is one of the areas that we're really looking into. So we're, we use, it's called the Danielson method, and many, many schools in the whole country, many, many schools in Vermont use it, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at it and say, are we really getting the most out of it? Is the, is the time and energy that we're spending in the evaluation system resulting in really good results, are we getting what we want out of it? So that's what the design team is looking at, and seeing if there are any tweaks or wholesale changes, because once it's in a design team, that's for that group to come back to the big group with their recommendations. School counseling, so you can see Heinsburg has, instead of red this year, it's got little hash marks, and that is because we're working on something that could resolve that issue. But we, I can't tell you right now that we've resolved it, I can tell you that all of the players that are part of the conversation are in the conversation, all of the players that are part of this conversation understand what it would mean to their own system, and at this point are willing to continue the conversation. So, if not this year, another year, but we know we're on the way to resolving that, because right now in Heinsburg, we have one school counselor to 522 kids, and remember what that number was, one to 300, so it's well over. And we might have another school that is very well-served in that area, and so we just need to figure out how to make it work in a way that is not disruptive to the whole system. Coordinated school health, we're also working on that, that's why it's in yellow, that's the work that Christine Lloyd-Lucrenti is doing, she's come to the Board a couple times, and that's big work, I mean, I think that that's probably going to be yellow for a couple of years, or maybe next year it'll be green with wines, I don't know, you know, but it is work that we're doing, it's important work. And class sizes, you know, the reason CVU's in yellow there is because they have, you'll see later, quite a few sections that are more than 100 students per teacher, that's why that's in yellow, everything else we need. So then the equity and autonomy work, so basically this year the projects that we delved into were class size, the essential arts, which are music, PE, art, and world languages, and the intervention framework. How will we organize to help kids if they don't get it the first time? What is, how are we organizing that work, and are we structuring it in a thoughtful, by-design way, or is it kind of by default, and, you know, you just say, he needs help, where can we find help now? So, I want to talk a little bit more about each one of those. So I want to stop on this slide, I want you to take a minute to look at it, this is where we are next year.
You'll have to come over here and look at it.
Okay, I'm in the way. Can you all see?
Just stand in front of Dave.
So, he's got his, everybody has these things, right? So, with the numbers that we have in grades one through high school, based on moving those students forward one year, and using the numbers from NESDEC, so the New England School Development Council is the group that we contract with to provide us with our enrollment data. So they project out, they look, they look at live births six, five years ago, fast-forward and say, here's how many kindergartners we predict in each of your schools. They also give us a chart that shows, what's the trend over the last 10 years? So back in 2007, we told you that the kids born in 2000, there were this many, and this is how many actually showed up in kindergarten in 2007, and we did, they do that all along. So you can kind of see, in a couple of our schools, the trend is pretty even, right? In one school, it's amazingly aligned, you know, like, how many live births there were six years ago is a really good, or five years ago is a really good predictor of how many kids are going to show up in kindergarten in Heinsburg. It's like, you know, it's not exact, but it's really a good predictor. It is a terrible predictor here in Charlotte, it's like it goes all over the place, sometimes it aligns, and, so, there's a little bit of risk management around those kindergarten numbers, but if we were to just take the numbers we have, that's what we'd have next year. So I want you to look at that, and I would like, I want to hear conversation about what you see there, because then we're going to look afterwards, please don't look ahead. But that looks like in individual schools, right? How does that look like in an individual school? And I just want you to conceptually, philosophically, look at this slide, and what do you see? And what do you think?
Can I just clarify, this is projection for next year based on NESDEC?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Not just NESDEC, real people in every class from grade one.
NESDEC and your planning and so forth.
For kindergarten, right, NESDEC for kindergarten.
Real people for the other.
Real people for everyone else.
Oh, I was talking about the whole table.
No, the whole table, except for kindergarten, is based on real students in a grade moved up to the next grade.
For next year, I just wanted to get the, it's not this year, it's next year.
It's next year.
Thank you.
Historically in Shelburne, we used to see a measurable bump from kindergarten to first grade every year, kids who hadn't done kindergarten, and it was pretty consistent, I don't know if other, of the elementary or the K-8 schools had the same thing, but is that included in this as well?
Some of it is.
Some factor for that?
Right, so some of it is included, so NESDEC, for those schools where it's all over the place, it includes 5%, I think, or, there's a factor that's built in there, whether or not that meets it every year, but there is a factor to adjust for, kids who go to private kindergartens, or, and honestly, that kindergarten number is the one that I got pushback the most from principals about, like, oh my gosh, you know, what's going to happen if in the summer, five more kids move in? Because whereas the EQS says the average of K through three, kindergarten is different, and more than 20 kids in a kindergarten class, even 20 is really, you know, I mean, that's a lot of kids, we need to start thinking about like, what's the support we're giving to that teacher? So just imagine you have a kindergarten teacher, what you're hoping is that every day those kids are coming to school, they're so excited about learning, and they're going to get into that real learning that they're really excited about every day, but with 20 kids first, starting probably next week, the teacher is going to spend 45 minutes taking the boots off. That's the truth, and putting them back on for go-to-recess, because kindergartners need to move and they need to get outside, taking them back off, lining them up to go to lunch, putting the boots back on, you get the picture, I mean, that is, I'm not making it up, and there's a huge difference between kindergarten and first grade when you're talking about that kind of stuff. So, we do have to have some risk management built in, and I have talked to Jean, and I know for every Board, you know, because you used to be your separate Boards, in every community, there was an understanding that if a bunch of kids moved in, you would revisit that for kindergarten.
Do we, we also used to say, if it did get to 20, that they needed a para in the class, is that included in that?
Actually, it's included in the budget numbers.
Okay.
Yes, for the ones that we know right now. And there's, and there's money for risk management also, so I don't know if this is the time to talk about that, we want to move forward. Okay, so the next slide shows how it really looks in each of the schools. So you can see there is a school there with 20.
Is this next year or this year?
This is next year.
Okay, thank you.
This is next year. They're not that far off from this year though, I did check on that, because that was one of the questions that came up in all those meetings, but that is, this, that's for next year.
So the Charlotte kindergarten is where we've budgeted for a para?
Yeah, right now. So we're kind of saying, right now in this presentation, you're the Board, you can tell us, hey, you didn't get that right. You can tell us, "Hey, you didn't get that right." Right now, we're saying, "If you hit 20, you need some other supports." So I hope.
I'm sorry, how many kindergarten classes are there in Charlotte?
I was just going to get to that. So there are two. And I overheard, and, you know, when Jean and Lynn were doing the orientation for the Budget Buddies, that she was saying, like, "One of the responsibilities is figuring out, like, who needs what, and is it different in one school or another?" This is an area where you think about it differently if you're, if you've got two kindergarten classes of 20 and five kids come in. It does not make sense, in an equity lens, to add a teacher. Now they're going to have class sizes of 13. And around the horn, in the same system, people are going to have 18, 18, and 18.4. So in a system where there are only two, two sections, then adding the para support makes more sense than adding a teacher. In another system, it might make more sense to add a teacher instead of five paras, because you've got five sections. So that's the piece that you have to believe that you're providing a support that's going to be helpful, that's going to address the issue of, we want the teachers to be spending their time doing what they do so well, which is engage students, make them love school, make them learn and love learning, and not just put boots on and help them blow their nose.
Should we move to Florida?
No boots, no boots.
I don't know. I'm sure there's something else in Florida. I don't know what it is exactly, because I don't know.
Sunscreen.
Sunscreen. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Do you want to talk, talk about the takeaways?
And so that's going to be next. I just want to make sure that people have time to absorb these slides and to say, raise your hand if you've got something, because, yeah.
I just want to confirm that these are the total FTE. It's Licensed Educators Assigned as a Classroom Teacher.
Yeah, these are just.
It doesn't count other.
Nope. We're, we're going to do a whole other project on that.
Yeah, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
And there's a project in abeyance. Transition year three, we will get to the supports that are there, to the classrooms that are not instructional. Not this year. We've started, but honestly, just doing this many is enough for one year.
Are there any contingencies in mind if, like, I'm looking at Williston and four through eight on the high side there? If numbers would fluctuate and that would bump even higher? I mean, I know we're still under the 25.
You'd have to get, you'd have to get a lot of kids to get to 25, because they've got a lot of sections. Okay? So that's where the changes are. Same slide, just at the bottom. It's removing, in order to do what we just showed you in the last three slides, it would mean that we would have two less professionals in Shelburne and one less professional in Williston.
So one thing that's different about Williston is that there's an awful lot of development when you go in there.
Yeah.
Is that ever considered?
Well, I certainly heard about that when we were having our meetings.
Two years ago, it was not.
So that's one of the risk factors that we need to mitigate. We need to be ready for that, but I don't know.
But we did, right?
We did. We, we do have that in the budget. We're just not, we're not putting the numbers here, because I want to remind you, as I've reminded the administrators when I've talked to them, I can only give you these numbers now. I can't do anything about these numbers later. One of the agreements we made last spring was that, at the point that we're staffing at this level, we don't later come back and say, "You don't need that teacher." Right? They're there. We are also saying, though, that we're going to hold some money aside as for risk mitigation to say, "If the numbers go up, though, we will add a teacher." So these are, these are the numbers as they stand today, knowing that they're, they're under your policy, they're within your policy, they're within EQS, and we do have money aside to provide supports either in the form of paras or in the form of teachers if we need it.
And that also assumes that there isn't going to be a bump class coming through in either of those schools that would require an extra teacher?
These are the real numbers.
Like in, in coming years?
So, you know, I'm just, I'm showing you a high-level numbers. My own data is by, by grade level, by teacher.
So, all right, so maybe I'm not understanding that chart. So if I look at that, am I assuming that two teachers are coming out of Shelburne?
And that, that's what, and that's what's going to be left. In kindergarten through third grade, they will have 18.5 per grade.
I think there's a typo in the, in the table. That's, is that, that's supposed to be 35 under Shelburne versus 37? If you go to the prior table, it's 37?
Well, that's the two, oh, 35.
And the numbers from the previous chart, the class, average class size and total FTE.
I went the other way.
Yes.
I had, I had a different typo going the other way, and I fixed it the wrong way. You're right, this is 35. So I know what you're, I know what the question is, but my own data is by grade level and by sections within that grade level. You're just seeing it all amassed?
Yeah, I guess my, it's, it's a bigger picture. It's, so we take two teachers out of Shelburne this year, next year we put two teachers back if there's a big bump? You've, you've looked at the data going forward, correct? And there's not a big wave class?
Shelburne's actually, it does, they do have a big wave class, but say, so I can't remember the numbers, but they have four teachers in every grade except for the third grade where they have five. Well, that extra teacher will just continue up.
Or somebody else will.
Okay.
Yeah, not the specific teacher, but the position.
So I do want to say another thing. This is an important piece, because remember, the board's goal is around equity and autonomy. So how we're getting to the autonomy is, I'm not saying to, I did the work. I know my tables show, like, if I were the principal, here's how I figured it out so it can work. I know that you can make it work, but all I'm saying to you, Greg, is that you've got 46 FTE. Do with it what you will. You know way better than I do whether or not, you know, the four through eight should be at 22.5, or they should be at 20.3, and K through three should be at 20. I don't know that, right? Principals know that. They know if they've got a grade level that they should be at 16, and another grade level can absolutely manage 23. That's a local decision about how to do that. Or they know whether or not they want to team their, their instruction together, you know, either through looping or through team teaching, or they want single-grade classrooms in some areas and then loop. That's, that's a local decision. That's the autonomy that still stays at the local level. What this is saying is, this is how many FTEs you have. And I'll fix the chart, but I know how it happened.
It happens.
Before you change the chart, like, so what are, what are you trying to show from the previous chart to this chart?
Where the reductions are. Just where the reductions are.
There are typos in there, so it's not showing.
Just one typo, right?
Well, your ratios are the same from one to the other, even though the.
Well, no, it's because the number's wrong. This should say, this should say 35.
35 should be on both charts. It just show.
The ratios, the, both of them have the same number of FTEs, both versions of the chart.
Right. And it should say 35 instead of 37.
So the first one should say 35.
They both should say 35.
So the result, so what you're saying is that from one year to the next, you're going to take out.
We can probably move on. I think this table's.
No, we can't move on. I'm asking a question, and everyone is talking over me every time I have to discuss this one.
I think I can answer this. So there was, there are 37 FTEs in Shelburne this year. We're proposing 35. And with the 35, those will be the class sizes. That's what it is.
So is, is that second chart just showing the, the two FTEs that you're dropping?
Right.
But the ratios stay the same from one chart to the next?
Right, because both charts should have 35 on them. You know, really, I mean, to be perfectly transparent, the charts are ordered this way, because if the board wanted to have a conversation about class size and whether or not it works for them, I'd hope they'd have it before we got to, like, "What's the impact on the town I live in?" Right? Because now you were stewards of education of all the students, not just the students in your town. And I want to remind you that this has gone around and around and around with the principals at Round Robin meetings, at lead meetings, and then us at COLT. And in terms of the Shelburne situation, we started this conversation last year. Shelburne is the school that last year, in the spring, I said, "Wow, I could take two teachers here. You don't need two teachers." And that's when we gathered all the principals, not just the Shelburne principals. And I said, "Here's what I'm seeing." And all the principals said, "Don't do that in the spring. If you're going to do that work, it's on you to do the good work in the fall. Don't come back in the spring when we've already started working with our staffs, we've spent time thinking about how we're going to organize things, and that totally discombobulates." So this was no surprise to people in Shelburne, because the conversation had already started last spring about some very small class sizes. So that's why they were ordered this way. I apologize for the typo. Really, what happened was I had 36. I don't think that number's right. Are you taking three or two? And I went, "No, you're right."
It started 39. I was 39. You took two. It's 37, but your other chart has said 37. But it should be, 37 is the after removal of the two positions. So it's 39, I just checked.
Yes.
So these are where we stand, going back to the chart that, that doesn't break it out by school.
Right.
That's where we stand relative to the, the state standards.
And your policy.
I, I know once upon a time, in the district that I represented.
Yes, yeah.
We had numbers that were significantly lower than that, as our targets, particularly for kindergarten, if I remember correctly, was something like 13 to 15. Um, you know, do we have, or, you know, do you have, you know, goals on what those numbers should look like? Are, are we happy where they are there?
Those are high.
Given the reality of, of lots of things, are we happy where they are? Or should we, as a board, be thinking about, you know, where we might want to get?
Right.
Or, or are we happy here, and as long as we can maintain this?
Those numbers are very far off from where they are today. Those are high numbers for kindergarten. They definitely are. They're not, they're not very far off from where they are today, and that is a board discussion. So just to, you know, this is for you guys to decide.
But I think the board, the board, you know, I mean, we can all pick a random number and say, "Well, you know, it's 19 now, and we'd like it to be 16."
Right.
But I don't really have, you know, kind of a framework or enough knowledge to say, "Well, you know, 16's the right number."
Right.
So that, I mean, that, that's something that I think ultimately has to come from the administration to say, "Here's where we are, here's where we'd like to be." And then I think it's up to the board to examine what the cost implications of that are. And if we, you know, want to go to 16 in kindergarten, what is that, you know, what, what does that look like? And where's the money come from?
Exactly. I was going to say, I think if you ask the principals, I bet if you ask the ones that are sitting right here, they'd say, "16 is a much better number for kindergarten than 18." And if you said to them, "And that's free money, we're not going to impact the rest of your program," they'd say, "Go for it yesterday." If you said, "16 is a better number, we believe you and we want to support that, go figure out where you're going to get it." Now, some of them might come back and say, "16 is the better number," and some of them might come back and say, "Uh, not at the expense of." You know what I mean?
Yep.
And that's legitimate, because honestly, we could always, the, our numbers aren't low anymore.
This is the conversation that we always have, where.
Right.
If you take a couple of kids out of each grade and you think your class size is going down, I mean, if you look at, just look at Shelburne, you have five kindergarten sets. To, you know, to get down to two, you're talking 10, you know, we're, that's only 10 kids. So you can't, you can't drop it down to two and then still have, "Oh, there's, that's not how it works." You've got to go up a whole integer class. And you're not going to drop down to 16. You're going to drop down to 18 times 5 divided by 6. You know that off the top of your head, Eric. I know.
15.
15, yeah. So that's the, that's really the argument. I think, you know, this is the classic case where the right size of kindergarten is just under the one that keeps the phone calls from coming in.
And I, I just want to remind you, I think that the numbers that are up there are not far from, if, in some cases, they're the same as the numbers that we got.
And what makes a difference, I think, is also, you would say this, it's not just the teacher, it's all the support services that go into each kindergarten.
Right. That's another project we're going to get to. So we, we've, we've done some really important work around that, I think.
It's sort of in our concept of year-round budgeting process, is this is something the board could decide at some point to say, you know, "We would really like, between now and this decision next year, to look at kindergarten class size." And then we can go off and do that work.
And look at that policy. And look at that policy.
Another thing that we could consider now that we're consolidated is that students can move between schools, and so if parents would prefer to take their child from the school that they would otherwise go into and move to another school to make the class, they could add one teacher at one school, and you brought extra students from the other towns there? I, I don't know if that's, that's probably too complicated, but.
Theoretically, theoretically, that would work, but I'm guessing that in kindergarten, to find 15 parents who would walk their kid to another school is.
Unless it was on the way to work.
Right, there you go.
Yeah. I mean, it would work if you weren't talking about human beings. That's the thing. I mean, there are kids, like, you know, you'd want them to be with the friends that they have in the neighborhood and.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
It might work fine for a kid on the Shelburne-Charlotte border, but, you know.
But to get a whole class.
If the number is, in Williston, we want to move them to.
I know I'm going to sound pie in the sky here, but I do think after some of the student disciplinary hearings that we've had this fall, the recurring thought for me has been, we need to continue to really focus on our early, early, early side, pre-K even, triple E, pre-K, and kindergarten. And the, the range of needs we're seeing from students in those situations only get more expensive as they get older. And so for those students in high school, the number of different services that we're going to need to try to hopefully steer a course the right way, and then when they leave school and are just in society, the costs get only greater, that as expensive as kindergarten is, it's more economical, and especially high-quality preschool. A lot of the challenges those students are having, not that it could be fixed there, but they're about self-regulation, they're about learning habits, they're about things that we can help. We might not be able to change family situations, but we can influence some of that and help students be more prepared and help, you know, if you have a class of 18 kindergarteners who've come from high-quality preschool, that's a whole different situation than if you have a class of 18 kindergarteners and half of them haven't been in preschool.
And I think that we're better off today in, in terms of that. That's definitely a focus at the state level. Quality preschool.
Are we going to have this, are we going to bring in overall staff ratios into this conversation at any point in time over the next eight weeks, or?
Do you mean, what do you mean by that? Like, I could just take.
Like the 4.2 versus 7.3 to 1.
Where we fit in the state with our ratios.
Oh, yeah. And we can, I mean, you guys have all seen that, right?
Yeah.
You know, all of a sudden, there's, that spreadsheet is not being shared anymore. So I don't know what that's about, but, right? And so I don't know what that's about, but, right?
Oh, really?
So, well, I mean, we got it once and so I don't know what's going on.
But the net of it is that they were trying to...
For those people who don't know, what Dave is asking about is, in late October, early November, the Agency of Education distributed to board members and to superintendents a spreadsheet that put all schools on a grid to show like what their staff-teacher ratios were. Staff-student ratio. So all staff, all students. Uh, taking out transportation, food service and facilities. And the average in Vermont is three-point-seven. And ours is at twelve. So we look good in that, in comparison. Twelve sounds like, really? There's one adult for every twelve? But that's all the adults, including the superintendent and, you know, the director of learning and innovation and the director of students. It's all of us. We look good there. If that's the metric that they're going to use, we look very good. We look efficient. So. Anything else about this? Doing far too, um, CBU. So here's a lot of CBU numbers. So obviously, the numbers you've seen up until now are kindergarten through eighth grade. We have four sites for kindergarten through eighth grade. And so when we're talking about equity and meeting needs and autonomy, that's all, those are the comparisons that we're making. When we're talking about those kind of comparisons, there's really a bright line between K-eight and nine-twelve. Just, just the way the system is structured is different. So, you're going to see a lot of charts here. Adam is the one who put the charts together. I kind of like distilled the numbers, but there, I want to give him credit for having put these charts together. And I was reminded by Jean when I was trying to figure out whether or not I should bombard you with all of these numbers. And she said, you know, these charts were developed over time by the CBU board for a reason. They helped the CBU board understand how does it work at CBU. And now you are that board. This is you. It's important you understand it. So you're going to see a whole lot of numbers. Um, and there are times when you will ask a question that I might turn to my colleague Jeff Evans, who was principal at CBU for a bit, or my colleague Jean Johnson, who was chair of the CBU board for a number of years, so. But here you can see, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen, what the class size numbers have looked like. And you can see pretty much, they've gotten bigger at CBU, just as they have in our K-eights. The bottom core is the freshman class. And that is how many kids there are in those cores each year. And so that's the average.
Can you speak to math a little bit?
In this one?
Yeah. I mean, just in the sense that where the numbers are relative to your math best practices, which involve a lot of sort of self-reasoning and talking and things that lend themselves maybe to a smaller cohort of kids. And, uh, you know, given that our math scores haven't really budged in the standardized tests, you know, is this format working for us and is our best practices, are we able to implement them the way you think they should be implemented?
Yeah, I think that they think they are at the core level. We're going to talk about math, upper-level math.
Yeah, we're on CBU, right?
Yeah, we're on CBU, but this is, oh, I see, right here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not just at the core. Yeah, so, uh, there is a request to add more sections of higher-level math. But we're saying do it within, again, this closed system. Here's what we've got. You, the principal, can play around with this because it turns out that next year's core class, freshman core, is significantly smaller than the current year's freshman core. And it's a blip. It's a small freshman class coming in, followed by another, you know, regular-sized class. So it doesn't make sense to discombobulate everything. But when I've talked to Adam about this, he says he can make it work. And he recognizes, acknowledges and is committed to adding more upper-level math classes because he's heard from kids that they want, this is a good problem to have. Kids are saying, hey, we want to take two math classes when we're juniors and seniors. That's great, right? We have to, we have to figure out how to make that happen.
So he thinks he can do it with?
Yep, he thinks he can do it with the numbers that we have here, right? Told you that too, right?
Feels happy about it, but...
No, always people would prefer that the response is, I'll add a teacher. Everybody, right? But, I mean, we're living in a situation, the context this year and has the same context that we've been in for five years, just doesn't allow us to do that. Um, so here are the numbers in the other areas. You'll see down at the bottom Tech Ed Designing Thinking Hub. So for board members who heard the presentation in October around the, um, I think it was part of the co-curricular presentation, um, around how Tech Ed, that design hub, really has become a design hub. It's not just a kid taking a class in metal fabrication and now you've got classes like that for six sections a day and kids rotate through. You have kids who are doing that. And you have other kids who are in a math class and they're trying to demonstrate their knowledge in a new way to their teacher and they're going to the, to Jeff Tobrak's class and saying, hey, could I use your tool? Can you show me how to use these tools so I could make this model that would demonstrate to my teacher and to my, my, you know, peers that I understand this mathematical concept, science concept, demographic concept, whatever. So it has become a place where people go to do hands-on representations of kind of analytical learning.
So when looking at these average class size numbers, it's pretty easy, I would think, K through eight, you know, what grade they're in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, here, particularly this sheet, there's a lot of electives.
Right.
How are we determining these class sizes? Or is, or do we just offer a certain number of slots and given the number of teachers we have and...
So I'm so glad that you said that because I need to, I have a note to myself to make sure you understand. At CBU, you are looking at this year's numbers. Because the kids haven't selected their classes yet.
Right.
And how can we anticipate what they're going to say they want to take for electives? There's some that we could plug in, but Adam doesn't know, none of us knows.
I know. Freshman English, you've got a pretty good idea what that might look like.
That, the core, we can tell. So that's why we know that there's going to be some play there. But all these other numbers, this is what exists today. So in Tech Ed Design Thinking Hub and in Family Consumer Science, those numbers are small by design. I mean, there are some safety issues in there. You really can't have more kids than that in a class where you are using power tools and...
So what, I mean, this is going to sound like an odd question because I've never been on the high school board, but Family Consumer Science, is that, just sounds like an anachronism. Is that like sort of a home act?
Yeah, that's the anachronism. This is the new, and I'm sure there's a new term that's going to come out any day.
Well, I mean, the existence of it seems like an anachronism.
Oh, I see.
You know what I mean? Like, that was from the fifties in my mind.
Jeff, you want to answer that one? I think I asked it when I was on the board.
Yeah, what is it?
Well, they've done some wonderful work. Have you ever seen their fashion shows or their Iron Chef competitions? And, uh, so they contextualize it to the modern preparation of clothing design and food preparation. There's, there are a number of courses offered.
They probably also do financial planning, that kind of thing.
We also have business advisors.
It's also like, what do you need to know to run your own life once you leave this place?
I just want to elaborate on that.
Yeah, please do.
We might have another expert.
I just want to elaborate on that comment a little bit about, you know, teaching you what you do in life. So I work in the healthcare sector and I can't tell you how many young people come out of college, come out of wherever they are, and they can't use a microwave. They can't write a check. They have no idea what an interest rate is on a credit card. And they've literally put themselves into a position where they have to seek help to get out of. Classes like Family Consumer Sciences teaches our children how to manage themselves when they become adult, adults. So right now, the new buzzword in society is called adulting. If you go to New York City, Syracuse, um, any big city, there are actually people out there who are buying old warehouse spaces, putting small kitchens in them, little classrooms, and young adults are paying to take Family Consumer Science classes. And we're able to teach that to our children in our districts.
So I do have a question. If we change some of the core offerings and offer higher-level math classes, do we?
Well, first of all, it won't be we, it'll be Adam.
No, not Adam.
I just want to say, because that's the piece of like, what's the board's role? And what's the administrator's role? Not even the superintendent, right?
That was a royal way.
That was, yeah, a royal way. That was not us here.
I'm going to take every advantage here.
No, so if Adam changes, I'm trying to make sure that Adam has the, or, I'm just making sure I understand this. So if Adam adds a higher-level math class, it seems to me that you'll have fewer kids with an open slot to take an elective or something else. So is he, is he then responsible for saying, okay, we're going to have, we're going to add this higher-level math class, this higher-level math class, and then we need to shuffle these other teachers around? Because if you, like, I'm wondering, are these students moving from one math class to another?
I'm going to let Jeff kind of jump in, but it's a really complicated, complex process when you're talking about thirteen hundred kids.
Yeah, I know. But that's on Adam?
And we want them to have lots of electives.
Right.
So they have to go through the process and then you see what you have. And then maybe that results and we need one less section of this. Or maybe that results and we need one more section of this.
But that's entirely on Adam. We tell Adam, you have a hundred staff and you sorted out.
That's exactly, that's his work.
Okay, that's what I was trying to make sure.
Yeah, for instance, I was in charge of three departments and one of them was English. We would look at all the requests. Here are all the kids who want Holocaust. Here are all the kids who want, uh, English ten, et cetera, et cetera. Here's the number of FT we actually have.
Right, okay.
There's how many preps everybody can have. What are we going to offer based on that? And there will be, there won't be enough sections for some things that there's a demand for.
Okay.
And there can be a reduction in some areas and additions in others.
But upper-level math is an elective.
Yes.
In a lot of ways.
Right, right, right.
You know, you don't have to take calculus.
One of the problems now is there's virtually no flexibility for a student to take more than one math class right now in junior and senior year. There's virtually no flexibility to do that.
You mean, one each year or one?
More than one in a school, in a semester or more school.
And they're clamoring for that. So it's a good problem to have. Okay?
Elaine?
Yes?
Just a comment about FACS also.
Yeah.
You know that yellow bar around coordinated school health?
Yeah.
Well, FACS is another opportunity where part of the curriculum can be and is at Williston. Health education.
Yes, right, thank you.
Nutrition pieces.
Family Consumer Science, that's what he's saying, FACS.
Right.
Exactly.
Don't want to lose sight of that either.
Thank you for saying that. That's right. And so it is true, you know, I've got yellow because I'm reporting to you based on the entire system. But it is true that in Williston, they already have a comprehensive school health. It's just that it's for their school. And we're working on how do we make that, not necessarily exactly the way they've done it in Williston, but how do we, how are we able to represent how we coordinate the comprehensive school health in each of our schools? So, this is the, um, chart that keys into the EQS around more than a hundred. Oh, no, no, this is actually, this is section size, right. So you can see that how many sections we have that are under twenty-five. Under fifteen, fifteen to nineteen, twenty to twenty-five and over twenty-five. And then the total in how many sections of English we have, for example, how many of math.
And fifteen, fifteen to nineteen, those are students per section?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes?
Is there a common thread that runs through the classes that are under fifteen people? Why?
Do you know, Jeff?
It really depends on the, um, the subject.
Okay.
For instance, in English, there's an applied English, the numbers are very small. It's for kids who need intense, uh, training instruction. And so you want to keep those numbers under fifteen.
Okay. Is that true with math?
That's an example, yes. There are some examples of that in each, but the reasons might change a bit.
Okay.
From, yeah, from subject to subject.
This was a, at least when I was looking at it from a board perspective, this was a good way to, um, understand if the, sorry, if the principal came in and said, I have five sections that are over twenty-five. Now, you can look at it, but you have ten sections that are under fifteen, you know, balance it as opposed to just getting, so this gives you the whole story.
Right.
And then there are a lot of good reasons why there are small classes, but it's, I think it always helped the administration to kind of focus on why things are split this way. And by the way, some of the classes that are small, they would have to look at and say, um, why am I offering it, you know, for four kids, maybe?
Also adding to the complexity, you might have two sections offered of the same course. And because of kids' schedules being so full, you have twenty-six in one class and twelve in another, it's the same course.
And the teachers are agreeing to that, right.
Because that's when the kids were available to take them off flops, yeah.
That's a good point. Russ?
So this may sound like it's coming from left field, but, you know, when a lot of these kids go to college, they're going to have lecture classes with hundreds of kids. And then there are other classes where, you know, you've got fifteen, you know, at the same institution. Does anybody in the high school world ever look at and say, okay, there are certain classes that we could do something like that with very large class sizes so that we could then concentrate, uh, you know, you know, smaller class sizes for areas that really need it?
I have that same exact question.
So did I. And so what was the answer?
I wish Joan Lenis was here because I think she was the one that responded to me. And she said, why would we do that? Why? Like, we have the opportunity to give these kids this, this intense instruction. Why would we push them ahead? And my response was, because in six months, they're going to be sitting in a class of a hundred. Why not? That, to me, would be preparation to get them, you know...
And again, I mean, perhaps some classes would work just fine with those, you know, with a much larger class size. And that would free up resources to use them elsewhere, like smaller kindergarten or, you know, or other classes within the high school. You know, I don't know where you'd offer that class. I don't know how many rooms we have at CBU that, you know, would hold. But, you know, you've got online, you've got all kinds of interesting options that...
But could you do that with, with the PLPs and the, and the way that, that, the expectations, the way that we're looking at proficiency now? I think there probably aren't a whole lot of colleges with, with class sizes of two-hundred that are doing what we're trying to do at CBU would be, would be my guess.
I think that there's differences though. College, you want to be there and you pay to be there. Not necessarily every one of our students in high school want to be in high school. They might be there for different reasons.
That's what we're working on, Brendan. That's why we're trying to keep the class sizes not so big.
Yeah, I think it's just...
Getting them engaged and, yeah.
Yeah, it's a completely different atmosphere. And isn't there a requirement that we saw on an earlier slide?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to see that. And this is not the slide that shows that, but obviously, there's going to be an intersection between this slide and I think it's the next one or the one after that. Was there somebody over here that wanted to say something?
I was just going to add to what Brendan said, that in college, they have no obligation to educate everybody who shows up at their doorstep. And we do. And brain research has suggested that direct instruction, which is how they're delivering in front of two-hundred people, really should be limited to about fifteen minutes before you have a chance to interact with it in small social settings. Much about what we're learning about the brain is so counter to what is happening in college that, um, don't let me get on the soapbox.
I do think what you said first hits a nerve for everybody, though, right? They're not responsible for educating everyone and we are, right? We are responsible for making sure that everybody.
And just to add to this conversation, it seems to me that at some point, there's going to be push on the high school administrators to work with their faculty to maybe do things differently. And it may be that there might be some different configurations of how classes are delivered. And that, to me, seems like a place for educators to kind of chew on it. But the board can say, look, there's pressure on you to think about how to do things differently.
I would also argue that even in lecture classes in college, there are TAs who then work in small groups with kids, in satellite groups.
So I noted it down because it's like the kindergarten one. Maybe at the, maybe at the January board meeting, the board may want to chew over what it wants to revisit before we do this again next year.
And it may be we graduate half of the seniors by January.
Exactly.
Just, I'm just putting it out there. There are different models to think about.
Well, with my practical hat on, as long as we get a full year of equalized per pupil. Because otherwise, we made a big mess for ourselves.
As long as we're throwing stuff on the table, put it all out there.
So this is the one that shows where we do have some sections, fifteen in core academic, seven in all other curriculums, twenty-two total. Teachers who have student-to-teacher ratios of over a hundred. And I'm not sharing that to say we need to fix that because when I shared that with Adam, he said that, you know, there are some people that you could say like, hey, you have a choice. You could be in this section with this many or you could be doing this. They'd choose this because this is the work they want to be doing. So, you know, it really is, this is about, it works for them. Moving along. So the essential arts, K-eight, I will tell you what fun project this was. So this is trying to wrap your head around what is it that's happening in art, music, PE and more than we're doing of our schools. Figuring out a way to like put it on paper so that you are illuminated by what you've done and working with everyone to make sure that in the end, we can say there's substantial equity. So the first slide I'm going to show you here is going to show you what it looks like across. And if you like scroll right down to the ratio piece, you will see that we're not that far off when you consider the enormity of it. There's probably, the numbers in Charlotte are probably a little bit lower. And we've had the conversations with the Charlotte administration. And maybe I should have put that in yellow because there are some conversations about fixing that. But by and large, the numbers are not so crazily off as a whole.
Is Charlotte skewed because of extra language further down?
Yes, yeah, that is a big part of it. Yep. So, then you can see what it looks like in each of the areas. And I'm going to just point you to the area where we are in so much alignment, and that is PE. PE is just, just coming out of the gate in each of our schools, very aligned. A subset of work that I'm doing right now, just this last week, I asked the principals to give me the data around it. So this is looking at it from like a teacher perspective. What is the teacher doing? The teacher is spending this many minutes on art, music, PE. So now I've asked the principals to give me the data on what's the kids getting, right? So how many minutes of art? I left it on the printer and Sandy brought it tonight. How many minutes of art to teach the kids get kindergarten, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, in Charlotte, Heinsbruck, Williston, Shelburne? How many minutes of PE? How many minutes? I just started. I haven't even begun to make sense of this. But it's a beginning to kind of like, that's what I'm calling a project, kind of diving deep and trying to understand it. So we know that the differences are really about values. Or about, you have a really good art teacher, let's say. And you have an opportunity to increase the amount of time that teacher has, even though you don't need to from an equity standpoint. But you're kind of doing that. And in another school, they've got really great music... And in another school, they've got really great music programs, so, like, when they have an opportunity, they shore up the FTE in music, and in another school, it's in world language. And as long as they meet EQS, which they all do, then we have to ask ourselves, is it our job to say they should look more equal than they do except for this one chart? Right? That bottom number, that ratio down at the bottom, should be more equal. So that's where we are. That includes for Williston, because Williston is the only school that has Family Consumer Science and a tech ed. So included, even with those numbers, Williston is at that ratio. So, that's what I mean about, those are values, right? They chose to add those to one-and-a-half positions, because half the position is half there. That's a choice that people can make, within that closed system. So we're still doing some work with this, but, as I said, we're kind of approaching it as it's a closed system. If we reduce some, if we add someplace, we need to find it someplace else. There's no, like, you're a little bit low in this area, so we're going to give you more, because there is no money unless somebody else wants to share.
Elaine?
Yes?
Just a quick question, as you're looking at the Unified Arts, or whatever we're calling it these days.
Essential Arts.
Essential Arts.
Everybody's calling it that. They chose in about five minutes.
It just popped into my head, the old term. So, we've done a good job comparing school to school, and it was something local boards had asked for over the past dozen years, or whatever. I'm wondering, as we go forward, what I've heard from some community members is fear that as the budget gets pinched, we're going to start taking out art, music, whatever. And, you know, at some point, board members would want to affirm that we value the creative thinking. It would also be helpful to have some comparisons to schools that we think are exemplar, and it may be out of state where we have to go for comparables, if that's available.
Yeah, yeah, to have, like, benchmark schools.
Benchmark schools, and I think.
Transition year three.
Yeah, just going forward, I know it's not going to happen this year, I'm just thinking.
Eric?
We'll need that.
I was just going to say, these numbers are the least, sort of robust, just because the denominator's too small. You know what I mean, like, there's so few teachers.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, if you have twenty classes and twenty teachers, you can kind of do the math, and it smoothes all the edges. But, to me, like, if you got one teacher doing music, with coming in early for lessons, staying late to drive kids to district competitions, I mean, he's a 1.2, 1.4.
Right.
You know what I mean? This is more of subjective, where you're saying, "Are the kids getting the attention?"
Right, you have more than one, though, because otherwise, it would be 1 to 341.
No, I'm not speaking of one individual.
Yeah, 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 just inject, right.
Even though it sounds like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
If you, I feel like that's more of a subjective thing, you just go, "Are all these kids getting a good experience in music?"
You know what, you're seeing, like, really, the easiest part of this, like I said, I'm doing, I'm doing the work around, like, okay, what is a kid getting? That's going to be informative, too. But there's another part, and somebody, I heard somebody mention it, I think, in the orientation session. So at the, during the negotiations sessions this last year, the board agreed to meet with the association around three areas, and one of them is Essential Arts. And that is about the schedule, and is it the same everywhere? Not like what kids get, not like what we're, you know, providing. How many minutes a teacher's working for a 1.0 position, or an 8.8? I have all the data on that, but that's work for the board committee and the association committee. But that's a whole other level, and that's a lot trickier than this.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, fair enough, I just felt like if you.
Yeah, 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 no, I hear what you're saying.
Building principal would have a good sense if it's working or not working.
Right, and again, so that's what, that's the autonomy piece, right? You get to hear, like, locally, are people saying, "You've got too much art and not enough music?" In one school, and in another school, you've got too much world language and not enough art? We need to be able to respond to that.
I don't know if you noticed this, Elaine, but we didn't make any budget adjustments in the Essential Arts area, for two reasons. One, it's so complicated, we have more work to do, and, second of all, sort of the Charlotte, they're pretty.
Right, 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 so Charlotte, there is one area that they're still working on. Just want to make sure that we're not misleading anybody, yeah.
I would add to, um, Kelly, your comment about asking for more information. I would add to understand, in the future, the brain science behind the Essential Arts, Creative Arts, whatever, because I do think, I'm a, I went to art school, just so everyone knows that, but I do think to be a thoughtful, conceptual learner, you need to have the opportunity to do this type of thinking, and you don't get that sitting in a regular seat, in a regular classroom. So, understanding that brain science might help inform future development of budget.
This year, every year, the board is on a cycle of information about, like, how the schools work, and this year's cycle topic is the Essential Arts. So last month, the phys ed teachers came in and did a presentation of how our program works. Here are the standards that we all work on, here are the assessments that we do, here are the incredibly creative, wonderful things we do to inspire kids to want to move and be active. And then, art teachers will come in, music teachers will come in, and then world language teachers will come in. So, that's a way to keep it in the board focus, yeah.
So, I, from experience, you know, I know that in the Essential Arts, you get a lot of point, you know, this and point that in terms of FTEs, a lot of the positions. And, you know, looking at art in Charlotte, where you've got one teacher for four-hundred-and-eighty-seven students in a school with three-hundred-and-forty-one, I understand you're trying to standardize, you know, the ratios, but that, yeah, I mean, that's got to work out to, like, a point-seven person.
Right, it is.
Are we able to do anything, or are we looking at, okay, if somebody can be a point-seven here, and they can have a point-three job, you know, they need a point-three in Heinsburg, so that they're a, you know, a full-time employee of the district, as opposed to, you know, having fractional jobs and fractional teachers here and there?
That's definitely on the table, for discussion. We have to figure out the scheduling.
Yeah.
Make sure that works easier in some areas than others, but that's on the table. A couple of the conversations that we're having, we're looking at that. We can't force somebody to do that, we can say, "Hey, there's an opening here," right? Yeah.
I have, and I don't know if this is a right question, but I think anything is valid. So where does recess stand into this, when you talk about Essential Arts? And, because one of the things, in Shelburne, I know, because my kids always talk about it, is time for recess. They have fifteen minutes, kind of.
So I'm collecting that data, too.
Which is like, you know, that's also the time they could use to socialize and interact. And I understand the logistics around who is going to watch them, because that's where also the issues occur. So where does that recess time get into here, and is it even accounted for? Because, one thing, if I have a PE, I would rather go out, then these kids have a lot of energy.
And some people do that.
And having them locked in class in PE, also in the gym, sometimes if they don't have that connection with the teacher, not everybody's getting it.
Right.
Not everybody's there.
And some PE teachers do bring their kids out, for PE. For PE, they're outside, doing activities. I am collecting that data, that's not one of the projects this year. I mean, it's just really, you can only do so many projects within a budget cycle. But it's one that's going, I mean, I have some of the beginning data on that. And the data that I have right now is around, how do people staff lunch and recess? Who's doing that work? Is it somebody who works in the school? Is it somebody from the outside that just comes in to do that? And how much time is needed? And I can tell, just from, like, the first level of work that I've done, that there's some interesting things to consider about that, but that's going to be for next year. But I think all the points you make are totally legitimate. Intervention framework, this is the thing that we've worked the most on. Megan, Jeff, and I, again, I mean, so this one, you know, that circle that I showed you, and I said, lead, round robin, and then cult, and then a subdivision of cult is what we call gym, so Jeff, Elizabeth, Megan, just because it's easy to say. We've had at least four sessions of, like, a couple hours or three hours, and today, honestly, when it was time to go to our cult meeting, we all went, like, "What happened in the last two-and-a-half hours?" Because we are in there, and steam is coming out of our head, because it's really, we all recognize, it's really, really important work. So, for some of our kids, they come to school, and they love school, they're engaged there, they are, and it's all clicking, and it all works, right? Right from the get-go. I call those the kids that are going to learn despite us, right? We still want to make it engaging and fun, and all of that stuff, but they're going to learn. But we have other kids that come to school, and they don't get it, like, the first time, and they need a little bit of help. So then it's so important that what we put together as a framework to support those kids is based on the good work that a couple of our design teams and the Special Ed Council did around interventions, around our guiding principles in special ed, around what we know about best practice. And so, that's been a lot of iterations of collecting data, of meeting at, during the lead meetings, to have hour-and-a-half sessions of thinking out, "How does this all look?" And then the three of us meeting with each of the principal groups to say, "Here's what we've got, this is how it works in your system. Given what we're telling you should be the components, what should it look like?" So I'm going to kind of take you through quickly what this all looks like. So, this is not going to be the last graphic that we're going to have about this, because what we want the graphic to show is that, in an intervention framework, one that is grounded in research and best practice, there are going to be three components. Two of them are going to be linked just like this, and the other one is going to be the support around the whole thing. The two that are linked just like this is, there has to be some leadership around this. It can't be each teacher's doing what they want to do, or each cluster doing what they want to do, or each person who's not a teacher doing what he or she wants to do. It really needs to be with some guidance from, some leadership model. There needs to be implementation of that model by professionals and non-professionals, like, some mix of that, and really clearly defining what that looks like. And then wrapped all around it, there needs to be the supports, the social-emotional learning supports that make all kids available for the learning, whether it's the kid who isn't regulated, or the kid who is, but is being distracted by the kid who isn't regulated. Everybody needs that, so that we can do the optimum work. So, that's what we want the graphics to represent, and we've gone all around the barn, we just said, like, a little. I'll just tell them, this is not the last graphic you're ever going to see, but I do want you to understand conceptually what we're thinking about. So, the first area, coaching and coordination, in every system, in each of our schools, there needs to be someone who is planning, coordinating, scheduling, directing, supporting the classroom teacher's instruction, planning and lending support for professional development, implementing local assessments, and serving as the, go between, between what we're doing as a whole system and what they're doing in their school, and making sure that we're all still all aligned. So that's one of those key areas. Next key area is implement. Obviously, we're not leading around theoretical stuff. We're leading around, what does Lynn need next week in reading, so that she'll get this? What does Jean need next month in math, so that she gets it? Whatever it is, right? So it has to be really directed, and that has to come from professionals, the implementation, and if it's from professionals, they are much more able to, on their own, just do their own planning, whatever, or from peers, in which case, it needs to be under the licensed supervision of a professional, whether that professional is from the lead team, or from the administrative team, in some cases, that might make sense, but there needs to be that function. And then lastly, we know, and we've talked about this, the board has, as a separate topic, their learning topic this year, is social-emotional learning. What is it that our kids need around that? So, here are all the areas, and Megan reminded me again today how important it is, when we're looking at these graphics, to make sure that, conceptually, we remember that, in social-emotional learning, we also need somebody to direct and lead, and somebody to implement, right? It just can't be, everybody's doing their own thing. You have a cast of characters who are all there to do this work, they're all doing their own things in isolation, and sometimes, the sum of all the parts isn't bigger than the whole, right? So, what we did is, the data that I have is based on actual people with real names, in real positions, and we took those real people with real names and real positions, and said, "If you are this type of position, we are going to normalize your salary to a particular number," so that we can compare across the systems, and, you know, get to ratios of how close are we to equity? So it's not a budget document, even the ones I have, not a budget document, but it is a way to make comparisons about, how much support do we have behind each kid? So, at the very top, you're seeing what percentage of the enrollment, this is just K-8, in Charlotte, they have thirteen percent of the CVSD, K-8 enrollment. In Heinsburg, they have twenty, Shelburne, twenty-eight, Williston, thirty-eight. If they were a hundred percent equal according to this metric, never mind that next year, we're going to look at, like, well, how does need play into this, right? Because equity isn't just about, everybody gets exactly the same thing. If they were exactly equal, the numbers that you look, looking down, for, like, Charlotte, for instance, they're at thirty-one percent in the lead category. Well, that's a whole lot more than thirteen. They're at fourteen in the implement, which is closer, in nineteen, in the SEL. What's shaded in blue are the conversations that we've had with everyone. So this is what existed in today's world, right? When we're just looking at all of it. In the cycle of conversations with the principals, we've started talking about other things. For instance, in some schools, there was no leadership, or so little leadership that it was really hard to see, like, where they, how they could really coordinate all of this. So, what you see in blue is what we're projecting, and it's still in conversation. So can't answer any questions about, "Well, what does that mean? What's that going to look like in Shelburne, or what's that going to look like in Heinsburg, or anywhere else?" But we know that within the closed system, without asking for any more money, we can make it work in each one of them, and start moving the equity piece, so that we get closer to an equitable system. Yes?
The previous slides don't call schools out individually, or the buildings out.
Yeah, they do.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Particularly to intervention framework, it's just kind of high-level information on it, and I'm.
Oh, you mean this?
Right, yes.
That's because, this is, this is kind of like the work that we did to put the framework together.
Right, and I'm just, so, having been to, I'm trying to take this to the high school level. Having been to disciplinary hearings, what are we doing at the high school level? Because this kind of looks like a.
This is K-8.
Right, this is a K-8 focus, but what is our intervention framework like at the high school level?
I would say, Amanda, that those components are not different at the high school.
That's what I was trying to get at, okay.
The existence of coaching coordination, the existing of implementation, and the existence of social-emotional support isn't different. What's very different at the high school level is how that, how you implement that, and what it looks like. So to do the numbers.
It wouldn't make sense.
It wouldn't make sense, right?
And that's, that makes it, I just wanted to make sure that every previous slide on this topic was also being done at high school.
Exactly, and we still, we've had the same conversation with Adam and his team around, how do you address coaching and coordination? How do you address social learning? It's just that the model is rightfully so different, that to put it in here wouldn't make sense.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Questions about that, or the work that we're doing around that? Elaine, yeah? Yes, Colleen?
I'm wondering if you could, like, pick a school, doesn't matter, any school, and just walk us through what these numbers mean? And I'm guessing, and correct me if I'm wrong, so if I were to look at Heinsburg, for example, twenty percent of the enrollment, and the leadership, where it's sixteen percent, that could be divided among a couple of people, or?
So.
And that's, the total staffing for leadership across the CVSD at the K-8 level, Heinsburg only has sixteen percent of the people FTE assigned to do leadership. But if it, and where I'm going is if we're, can we implement more centrally?
Well, so some of this is.
Like, maybe it's appropriate.
So some of it, so in the matrix that I have, some of it is implemented centrally. So let's take the coaches. They're deployed across the system. So we're taking a pretty good guess at, like, what percentage of that coach each of the schools are getting. Separately, Heinsburg and Williston have their own coaches. That's what their leadership looks like. That's what their leadership looks like.
And that's based on prior budgets where.
In other schools, the leadership might be math and literacy coordinators. So that's what we're untangling and figuring out what of each one of those categories do you need to have a really robust system? The work that we were doing today was around PERS, PERS specialist, intensive PERS. And we're actually renaming that, reframing that, doing like really high level work around, let's be really clear about what the needs of the organization are in each of these categories. What does it look like? And how do we make sure that we have everything chain linked so that it's cohesive and coherent?
Right, so we might have some PERS that do not have a master's degree in education. We might have some PERS that do have a master's degree in education and they might be deployed differently in different buildings.
They're going to have a different job description and they're going to be doing different work.
And so you're trying to tease that apart.
And we're trying to be, align it across because it isn't. But because that is one of the functions that when we weren't merged, everybody did at their own level. When we merged, finally, we realized, oh, my goodness, it's, there, there's some problematic.
We have some unique qualities at different schools or?
Yeah, and maybe some problems and challenges we need to deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about that?
Just to look into this graph here, because I'm trying to, I guess student population and your projections from year to year are what caused these ratios to change?
We just use the number, we use the current numbers.
Okay, just looking at seventeen, or eighteen to nineteen for implementation for Williston, why would, that's like the biggest jump from twenty-eight to thirty-eight.
It's proposed.
Staffing changes.
It's proposed staffing.
Yeah, students don't factor into here. It has more to do with how they were currently distributing resources, having good conversations about are there better ways to distribute resources? Are we under implementing and over coaching or, or vice versa? And these are current status of proposals that we might do to address things that came up in that context. So enrollment, in a sense, doesn't factor into this particular chart. It has more to do with how we distribute the resources that we do have.
And treating it as a closed system, so budget neutral.
Yeah. And again, it's, they're meeting with the administrators saying, how do you imagine, given that we've got this conceptual model, how do you imagine staffing your own system? And I know they're taking this seriously. I mean, I just got an email from a principal on Monday saying, do you think I could meet with you on Thursday? I've got some ideas about some stuff I might be doing. You know, so people are energized around this because this is important work. It is the work that's going to make a difference for our kids. Okay? Lastly, administration, so here's who all our administrators are. You can see what, you know, in our system, anybody who works one hundred and eighty-nine days is full-time. So it's hard because FTE just tells you like what of like the NASA people who are in that position are. But anybody who's working one hundred and eighty-nine days is a full-time person. But an administrator works two hundred and twenty-nine days. So that's why you'll see on some of these, they're working two hundred and ten days. That would be equivalent to point nine of that full administrator on schedule.
But they're still?
It's a full person.
Okay, so it's.
Working two hundred and ten days instead of two hundred and twenty-nine days.
So how are some working two sixty?
Oh, two sixty, yeah, so two sixty really is.
Full year full time.
That's a full year full benefits.
Oh, versus a ten month.
When you take out all of the vacations and everything, that's two twenty-nine, right?
Do you call them ten month contracts?
So do principals and administrators work through the summers?
Yes, except for the ones who are two hundred and ten days.
They don't. They might or may not.
They're going to work two hundred and ten days. They're going to work one hundred and eighty-nine student days and teacher days, and then they're going to add the others and that's however they work it out. So here's where we are with that. For each school, what the student administrator ratio is, what the teacher administrator ratio is. The state averages K eight, so that is a subset of schools on the state website, on their data website, that are just K eight schools. They're by and large the biggest schools in the state and there are twenty-six of those schools. So that's what the cohort size is.
Are these numbers for next year taking into account the staffing changes at Shelburne and Williston?
Yes. Well, this is for, yes, yeah, yeah. And the reason that CCS is highlighted is because we're under some conversation with the Charlotte administration around the previous set of slides, around the intervention framework. Makes sense in some of our schools that perhaps the principals could do some of that work. Particularly if in the case of Shelburne, both of the principals have that background and could do, lead some of that. So it wouldn't mean that they still wouldn't work their two hundred and ten days and be full people in the school, but some of their work would come, the FTE would come out of here and would go into that intervention model. But that's still for discussion because that's, there are a lot of moving parts. And as those of us who are involved in the district management group work have been told countless times, we need to be opportunistic about this. We need to wait for the opportunity to present itself sometimes to do it instead of like forcing it a year ahead of time and causing chaos in the system. So we're just trying to see if there's a way to do that this year or if we've just got to have it in our site and wait for the opportunity.
So it's interesting looking at this, we've got two K to eight buildings where we don't have any full, full-time, year-round administrators. And then we've got really three buildings, because you got two in Williston, where everybody is, well, leaving out Special Ed for the moment, but the principals are, which skews the number a little bit when you come down to the ratios. I mean, you've got.
I count them as point nine, the people who aren't working, they're working full year.
No, actually, in Shelburne and Williston where you've got a two-point-oh and a three-point-oh, a good stretch of that, there's nobody in the building.
Right.
So are we looking at all, do we, you know, need two hundred and sixty, sixty days in some of those positions?
I'd have to think about that. I mean, I, I just know that there's a lot of work that gets done in the summer.
What are they doing in Shelburne and Williston then that's not getting done in Heinsburg and Charlotte? Because you don't have somebody, or vice versa, what is the extra work? Maybe they're benefiting the whole district instead of just their particular building.
Well, I can think there's somebody in the room who could be very helpful in teasing that out.
What is, you know, who's either getting short shrift or, you know, getting excess more than they need? I mean.
Worth asking a question. I mean, it's a really good question. It's a great question, I, on the spot, really need to.
Put that on your list of.
But I think, I guess, maybe I'm reading the ratios wrong because the population of those two schools that you're being in on are both significantly larger than the other two. So you're looking at admins that are responsible for more students and more teachers in that case, and so.
He's talking about the time when there aren't students and teachers.
During the summer, there's twenty-one days for CCS.
Yeah, but I think we all, we all know what, what happens. You're supposed to be working on this particular project and you have to go in and substitute for a class because.
I'm, I'm not making a call on what's, which of these is the right number, but I, I'm just saying, you, you've got two buildings where, you know, nobody's there year-round and you've got two buildings or, you know, two.
I would just take exception a little bit to year-round because they're there in the summer. They're there for twenty days of the summer, something like that.
So they're able to get it done in twenty days, what the others are taking, whatever the count is? I don't know, I, I just think it's worth.
I think it's a totally good question.
It's worthwhile to look at and, and to make sure we understand.
I just know like how much we prize the summer for the work that you can never get done during the school year. So I'm really thinking about.
I'm not judging one way or the other.
This is like, this is throwing us because Russ wants to add.
Maybe, maybe it is. Maybe one of the, one of the, you know, at least in Heinsburg and Charlotte, you've got, you know, co-principals effectively in both buildings, maybe at least one of them can and should be. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering what the difference, I'm just wondering what the, well, then you got to find a way to pay for it.
That is why we are where we are.
I'm just wondering what the difference is in, you know, in one building or one K to eight, you know, group compared to the other.
I got a question.
Yeah, but it is a good question.
I wouldn't necessarily assume that one is right and the other is wrong. This model could be right for everybody. So I, I wouldn't, I don't, I wouldn't be surprised if you guys came back with that answer and I'm not expecting you to come back and say this is better than.
You know, did, did we get to these points, to these points when we had separate budgets and you were looking for, you know, ten or fifteen grand to shave here or there because you had to squeeze something out of the Charlotte budget when it, when it was a standalone budget? And now that it's not, you know, was that really the right thing? And again, I, I just want to, I think, I think you want to understand, you know, equity across the whole thing.
I think it's a great question.
If you want to talk about equity, you need to make sure that these ratios are in line. So how do you make these ratios better than what they are? Because there's a very large delta here.
But, you know, these ratios are a little bit skewed because you've got, you know, point-two FTEs in Shelburne, you know, that, if, if you said, well, what's the, the number of students per principal when there's actually students in the building, you're dividing by two-point-oh instead of one-point-eight. So when the teachers are there and when the students are there, I would say that Shelburne and Williston actually have higher loads per principal or per administrator than, than what's measured here or what's shown here.
So we need to understand, is part of the question like, how do they spend their time?
How do they spend their time?
Here's how they're supposed to be, right? That remember, I want to bring you back to, this is what we hope principals are going to be spending their time. And then more teachers definitely is a factor of how much of that time being. Your question is, well, how does that play out in the summer? Right, that's more the question.
And if they're, if they're no longer spending as much time on facilities or, you know, or budget or what, you know, other things, then.
More on this, right. But this is what, this is, this is the important work of principals. And we are where we are definitely because of budget considerations.
I just, you know, just as an example to support Russ's question is, I remember as a board member over time, like we came to a decision to shave ten days off of a position just because we were so crunched for money.
Yeah, ten days, right.
You know, or something like that. And I, I can't pinpoint the exact date and how that played out, but I do know that every board member
And so then in your case, you could have principals who would come and say, guess what? We've talked with each other and we think we could go down to two hundred and ten days each and then that would be the solution, right?
Or maybe they all need to be two-thirty, two-twenty-nine, whatever it is. I think that's a good question, how do we support equity across the schools on these ratios?
But I'd like to also say we need the autonomy as well.
Right, right, and it may be, exactly, it might be appropriate for different buildings to have different, yeah.
I did kind of have an overall question, it sort of ties. So you, this is a wonderful presentation, by the way. I really liked that it was similar to last year's in some ways, so we're kind of weaving some themes like I'm hoping we'll see next year and future years as well. Given the reductions of two staff or three total staff, how does local administration feel about the proposed changes? Are they okay with it? Are they really nervous?
The area that they're most nervous about is the kindergarten.
Okay.
That is the pushback I got in more than one place.
Can we at the next meeting possibly see our risk management approaches so that if we, if we, because if that's an area of concern and that's something that the board could make decisions on, I, I'd like to know what our options might be or, because if it meant like an extra percent in the budget, instead of two-point-three, it'd be two-point-four and we could give just that extra wiggle room to make that risk factor go down. I'd like to know, you know, what possible things we could do.
So let, how about next meeting, Janie will come back, Russ and Jean and Lynn to come back here, whatever they already got in the budget for risk management.
Lynn had a good idea.
And then you can decide whether or not.
I, I think that's a great idea, but I think I would hold off and do that after we do operations and maintenance so we have the whole budget picture and then that risk management, I think, might be.
Make more sense?
Make more sense.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it's all dollars, so if I'm saving it in operations instead of teaching, it's still dollars that we could pull the trigger on if we needed to next summer.
Although we want to keep them separate in some ways too.
But that's, that's right, but you should see it all, you should see it all, yeah.
You know, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul at some point.
And we don't want to get too far away from this meeting, like, my memory is, it's okay, but like.
Refresh.
You can watch it again, in January.
It's on our E T M. You can watch it five times if you want.
Discussion though, without have, actually having to make decisions.
Yeah, just kind of a quick, here's food for thought.
Any other questions? Yes?
I just had a comment about the ratios for school counselors and students. I think within the, the goal of increasing social emotional competency, I think that historically, school counselors had a far more limited role in schools and so that maybe numbers like three hundred elementary students to a school counselor might have made sense. I think when you look today at the broad expansion of that role where school counselors are working, teaching in classrooms, consulting one-on-one with teachers, meeting with students individually, working with families, taking on broader topics like diversity and equity. I just, in, in thinking of, or as you, as a board are thinking in years ahead, I just find that those numbers seem very unrealistic to me. That particularly when, when we're thinking as the point was made earlier about the importance of front-loading services for younger kids and the partnering, the partnerships that go on between school counselors and special educators, it, it feels to me that school counselors have the education and the training to do a lot of deep work and if we are spreading them too thin, even though they're within the guidelines of what is currently set, then I wonder if, if that's good planning, you know, for the long term. So I just throw that out as a consideration when you're, when you're thinking about those ratios because personally, I think those ratios don't make a lot of sense.
So education quality standards were just redone maybe three years ago or four years ago. So they, I mean, really, and I happen to have been on that commission. So there was a lot of conversation about that and that's why the education quality standards, the school counseling, three hundred per school counselor and other student support personnel. So for us, I was going to try to pull up my slide with all of the data. That's not just school counselors, that's SAPs in some schools, not all schools, and we've had that conversation. It's behavior coaches, it's planning room people, so there is a whole group. So you're kind of seeing that as a function, but it's a very complex system that's supporting that particular thing. And so then locally, people make decisions. Sometimes the decisions are made based on, I think this is the best way to structure it. Always that's, you know, that's, that's part of the equation. But sometimes it's also about, we have this person in the system who would be so fantastic at this. And it's not a school counselor, it's somebody else who's going to work with the school counselor that everybody agrees is going to make such a difference. So that's that flexibility again in the autonomy that we have at the local level for people to see, who are the people that we have and do we want to add this, more of this or more of this? Making sure though that we at least stay with one to three hundred or as close to that as possible. But I feel like we do have good supports in that area and that we're really having good conversations all around. Cassandra is, point-five of her work this year is to coordinate all of that, to make sure. And she's, comes with a wealth of experience and expertise, you know, to help us with all of that.
So when you expand that number out to, to student support services, I'm just wondering then what that ratio number looks like in terms of staff to student ratio?
Well, we, and we can bring you the more detailed piece because the EQS slide with the green is really just talking about school counselors. What, what I can tell you is it, it makes the ratio far, look far better. Meaning there are far more support people per student when you factor in all those other people. We can.
That would be helpful to have.
Yeah, and I don't think it's going to be in here because we.
Social emotional.
Only the, so here's, here's some element of it.
Yeah, but it's only proportional. Yeah, but it's only proportional.
We have much more detail.
Yeah, so we can bring some more detail about what are the different types of roles and who are they. But you can see, I mean, even just from looking at those percentages, school counselors are part of those percentages, but so are all the other lists of people that Elaine talked about. So, in some systems where there's varying levels of school counselor, there's varying levels of two or three other things. But we can put some detail behind that and show, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. For the, this is in regards to the compliance, the C Q S. By the way, it looks much better than last year. I kind of glanced in your PowerPoint slides from last year.
Thank you for doing that. Did your homework?
I was like, you know, what's this about? But for professional development, which you mentioned that, you know, now it's more, and I don't know if I had this right, it's weekly, maybe?
It's weekly, yeah.
Okay. Is there standardized professional development for all the schools? Or each school is coming up with their own? And the reason I ask this is because-
It's a great question, yeah.
At the beginning of the, before school started, that professional development that the teachers received, and I felt it as a parent, that they had gotten it. Because that piece was kind of missing and the subject, and I don't have the details around it, but it was around connecting with the kids.
Right.
Because that also drills down, like, when you talk about how many kids appear in the planning room. Because having been in school from first grade to seventh, I mean, we've had it all, like, seeing kids, how many of them go to the planning room and how often? And there is this idea that kids kind of, you know, get their board. So, they're like, oh, what am I gonna do today in class? I arrive, I'm gonna do the same thing because I know I'm ending up in the planning room. So, but that being said, I think the professional development is a very critical component to our teachers. And I don't know if we have that standardized overboard. Because you could find that Charlotte is having, I don't know, I'm gonna bring it up, ratio development, whatever it is. And Shelburne, we haven't gotten that.
Right.
So, how do we get all that professional development to be standardized?
Right, so it's a little bit complicated because some of it is, definitely everybody shares. So, last year, a year ago, one of the, remember I always said that a leadership team has design teams that work on key topics? A year ago, that was one of the key topics. What are we doing and how are we communicating? What we're doing in the first year of year-round professional development, early release, late start. So, everybody's sharing and they're learning from each other and they're going, that's a good idea. I'll do that, right? So, it happens at that level. That's still going on. At another level, there is the piece around, what is it that's needed at that school? And I've seen a big difference from last year to this year in terms of principals being ahead of it in understanding, like, how to structure that time, how to get input from the faculty and staff about what the needs are, how to get input from, in the systems that have really active parent-teacher groups, how to get their input and then schedule that. I don't know that we'd ever get to a place where we'd say it's gonna be standardized and the same everywhere because I don't think that would work. It would feel like it's not needs-based necessarily.
Well, it depends on subjects, though.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, on the other hand, there could be some topics that we'd say, hey, you know, what are the topics that during this year, everybody ought to cover? Right? That would be, you know, I say a lot very often, it's a continuous improvement. In the Champlain Valley School District, it's continuous improvement. We are not perfect. We're not gonna be perfect next year or the year after. But what we can promise to everybody is we're gonna be better every single year. Because we're always, like, taking suggestions like that and thinking, oh, how would we implement that suggestion and make sure that it gets incorporated in the work that we do? It's a great suggestion. So, thanks. Yeah, Colleen?
And I imagine that community members would be interested in the professional development. So, as far as the annual report goes, it'd be nice to have a brief section related to that so that parents understand. Because they are dealing with the early release and so they're probably wondering how that time is used.
Right. Yep.
I would add, for a lot of families, I'm from Shelburne. For a lot of families that I know, working families, it's really hard. The early release is hard. It costs extra money. Sometimes kids are going home, they're latchkey kids and they're just going home. And they're there till 5 o'clock. So, while it's great for the school and teachers, it hopefully comes back to those kids.
Ultimately for the kids. We only do it for the kids.
There is the, that flip side. So, I would ask, I would, I would, it's been a hot topic for me. I have emailed with Dave and I think talked about it with you before it was passed and before this merger board was formed. But I feel, I do, I would like there to be some feedback from community. Maybe I'm totally off and my beat is just a certain subset of people and it's not, it's not broad.
So, I think that the other related thing for us to do, though, is to figure out, how can we support parents in childcare? So, I know that we have at least one system that is really doing that in a good way. So, how can we, how can we standardize that?
Right, is there, I know that there's extra part two, but you still have to pay for it.
Right, but if needs-based, right? They can help. And maybe there are other things. We just need to figure that out.
If it makes you feel any better, nobody liked the old way any better either. It's just different, you know, different people, different families, you know, one way works better than the other.
Right.
Hasn't been a perfect system yet for everybody. But, you know, there were plenty of reasons why the old way didn't work so great either in some instances, so.
And we don't do professional development because it's a requirement, but it is a requirement. We have to, in our calendar, demonstrate that we have six days. So, if it wasn't early release, it would be six days that kids wouldn't be in school during that school year. Because the requirement is embedded professional development, which means it's in the school year.
If some group is going to be inconvenienced by the way we do it, then the question is, is what's the most effective way for the teachers actually to get the professional development?
And how can we help?
Understood, right. But it's easier if I'm working at a cash register on an hourly basis. It's easier for me to get a whole day off than like three hours of my shift. So, it's hard, you know, I get that it's a balance. I get it. But I don't want you to forget the people that generally don't speak up for maybe they're too proud to say.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I like this family consumer science class.
Yeah.
And I had, I think Williston has that.
Yes, they do.
But I'm thinking such, because I can relate with Brandon. I think he mentioned that, you know, how kids get into college and they don't even know how to, I don't know, even manage their funds. And I know that because I have nieces who are going through that. I mean, they see friends in college and they can't do this. So, I think such a class is also, would be helpful in all schools. And my question is, like, Williston that has implemented it, did they just figure out a teacher that could take care of that? And just, like, they have their budget, right? They have their number of teachers and just figured, we need this class? Because I think it showed they have that class already.
So, what really happened was many, many years ago in the last century, and it was deep into the last century, there was a requirement that all middle schools have family consumer science and what was called-
Tech ed?
Oh, before tech ed, it was industrial arts. Okay, so those were the two classes that you had to have. And in the last iteration of EQS, which were called school quality standards, they removed the requirement to have an actual section that was called that and they said you need to integrate it into your curriculum. And what happened with that was schools sold their equipment, said, we'll just integrate, and Williston didn't. Williston had a, maybe it has to do with, like, they had a teacher there who had been there for a long time and stayed until, what, a couple of years ago? Because there is equipment, right, that's required for that. So, that's really what happened. It wasn't like a decision that somebody made. It was like probably boards sitting around the table, just like this one, came to a time where, like, said to the administration, we can't afford this. You're gonna have to find something. And they went like, okay, well, we can, this teacher's retiring anyways. We'll be opportunistic and we won't fund this. And now, you know, you've said a lot of good reasons that I think that family consumer science and tech ed are important. But just looking at what's happening at the high school around the tech ed program and kids migrating there to say, I'm taking AP Bio, but I wanna come to this space to do a project that will help me understand what I'm working on in AP Bio better and will demonstrate what I know. That's true at the middle school level, too. So, people are trying to figure out how to do that. And that's happening in maker spaces that are kind of springing up in different places and we're trying to figure it out.
So, I think what you're saying is it's important to remember that it's not that the other kids aren't getting that content. It's just not a separate class. They could be getting it in art and music or math or something else.
Or not, though. I mean, we have to really say honestly, or not. I don't know. Because we haven't done that work.
Right, right.
That would be another kind of, like, dig deep to see where we are with this and how we make it available.
Yeah, I think a quick, when you brought up home ec at Ross, I went and searched the CBU handbook for family consumer science and it had six or eight classes that were, you know, what Brendan had mentioned and a couple of things about child psychology and adult psychology, which were, you know, those are great. Those are, it'd be great if all kids could have it, have some of those skills at a younger age. And you can see, you made this comment earlier. Williston just made a choice to have these two, you know, basically they took some of their resources away from art and added it to family and consumer sciences to do that a little earlier. But thank goodness, we're trying to catch them all in high school, so.
And in high school, I don't know if this exists now at CBU, but to have a parenting education class, I think, would be great. Is that in there as well?
It's in there. If you Google that-
There used to be a class where they carried around a baby.
I remember seeing them at the hockey games. All of a sudden, you're crying, what's going on?
If you, just Google that or look at the course handbook. I think you could get straight to the course handbook. It's page 48 of the course handbook has all the family consumer science.
Thank you for that research.
Yeah, yeah.
I also wanna mention a pretty impressive business program that also deals with a lot of the adulting that Brendan referenced.
Hey, that's a real term nowadays.
I like it.
What percentage of students at the high school go to Essex or Burlington for vocational training?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I can get it for you next meeting.
Just roughly, I just wonder, and does it feel from a budget perspective like-
We have it in the high school data. I just don't have it with me.
We don't have a choice about that. That is a requirement. That students who wanna go, get to go and that we do nothing to stand in their way and they have a choice, right? I mean, that's, and we just get the bill.
And does that include-
We do, but the recent improvements in our maker space and our-
Yeah, yeah. Encourages kids to-
Tech ed programming has, we hope, made an impact and seems to be having an impact.
And does that cover transportation costs as well for students to go?
We have to make the, we have to transport them.
So, there aren't any barriers at all that could exist?
No, no.
My daughter wants to take one of the psychology courses because that's what she's thinking about doing in college. So, she figures she can test it in the O C A P. And the other thing that, about the business, I really, really would love to see this personal finance be a requirement for all the students at CBU. Because she's going through it right now and I, and she has talked to so many friends because it's the hardest class to get into. And she is now mentally prepared for what college is potentially gonna cost, what it's gonna be like for the job that she's looking for. The woman, I can't tell you how great it is. And we are totally, that's the first class that we really think that every student should be required to take. It's just, it's amazing.
That's the presentation, yeah.
Okay, so, I move on to 5.0, which is our consent agenda. Do I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Next meeting's, there's a finance committee meeting next week, 6:00 PM on the 12th. And then, we have an executive committee meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning. I was gonna say an executive committee meeting tomorrow morning, 8 o'clock.
So, those of you on the executive committee, 8 o'clock at C V, uh, C S S U. And we meet back again in this group on the 19th at Heinsburg. And I want to thank you guys, all of you, for coming. I will also just remember, folks, a little bit of mechanics of communication. Please don't reply to all to any of our messages. If possible, try to blind copy. And if you have any issues for the whole board, try to funnel them through me first before replying to everyone. Other than that-
Jean and I did talk a little bit about, as we go through the budget, if you have questions about the budget. If you can email both of us your questions and then we'll figure out the best way to have them all addressed.
We're just following up on Dave's statement just now about trying to funnel things through Dave. Do you want us to send questions to Dave and let Dave make the connections to you and Jean?
We were thinking we would be able to figure out what we could handle in the finance committee meetings and then report back out to the whole board. I guess that's how we were, we were-
Glad to delegate any emails about the budget process to Jean and Lynn.
Okay, I just wanna be clear that we just had a statement of channel things through our chair.
I like to be a rebel.
Trouble, trouble, trouble.
Massive reply-all email chains.
All right, can you get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Thank you.